Order, please call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Seiberson?
Yes.
Zini?
Yes.
Gage?
Fair.
Kooch?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
Taker?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. First thing, business we have done is a public hearing on order in seventeen eighteen forty-six, amending chapter eleven twelve, public communication services and rates. Is there anybody here to speak to that? CNN will close that public hearing that brings us down to our second public hearing on order in seventeen eighteen forty-seven, amending the catch government. This will go chapter eleven sixteen entitled Water Rates to Provide for Increasing Water Rates for Seafood Processors and allied industries. Is there anybody to speak to that tonight? Come on up, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I want to again speak against a proposed water rate increase for the fish processors. Fish processors have been painted in a negative light lately and for many years in regards to this war negotiation. Members of the city council have on many occasions over the past years termed what is going on with water as that the fish business is being subsidized by the city. And that simply isn't true. The method of billing for water has been in place for well over fifty years and based on the way water has been billed, business has made good use of that water available. But we've not requested a subsidy or received a subsidy. Water in the form of rain is one of the natural resources we have in access here in Ketchikan and it should be used to retain businesses rather than run them out of town. If there is any subsidization taking place, the fishing industry subsidizes the city through fish taxes and self-imposed enhancement taxes. Those taxes are used to create the fish at the hatcheries around southeast Alaska and that fuels the economic engine that commercial fish business provides to this city. Those hatchery fish that are paid for by commercial fishermen are also the fish caught in the sport fish tourism industry. And without commercial fish paying that bill, the sport fish tourism business would be in a big world of hurt as well. The fish processors have met with the city on several occasions and have been told that if we reduce our water consumption or even completely stop using water, it's not going to reduce the cost of the water department. We've also been told that only about two percent of the water department's budget is used for water treatment and the remaining infrastructure-based costs, the fish processors only use slightly more infrastructure than a residential water tap. Our pipe is larger but it runs directly off the main, which keeps servicing costs at a minimum. We were also told that those, when we met a few years ago and we had eight percent increases year over year, that those increases were going to bring the water department so that they could cover their operational costs. Now, what the city is proposing is not for operational costs but to build a savings account to cover future costs. Why we have to go to thirty-five percent year over year to build that savings account? I don't know. But thirty-five percent per year compounding over three years at the same time that the state of Alaska and the federal government have declared a salmon fishing disaster for the two thousand sixteen pink salmon harvest and are currently soliciting federal disaster relief for fishermen and processors. But for some reason, there's a belief here that we can handle this kind of a giant increase and it's just not, just not true. We can't, fish processors can't raise the prices of fish whenever they want to in the main business. Fish is sold on a worldwide market and that market controls the sales price and not the guys here in Ketchikan. I guess, you know, just to summarize, you know, we just don't appreciate being painted as the bad guy, you know, in the paper and on the radio and it says that we're being subsidized and makes us, everybody's trying to make a big statement and, you know, if you say something enough times, people start believing it and it isn't, it simply is not true. We are not being subsidized. I guess if we have to continue with a rate increase, we'd like to see a more manageable amount and have the increase extended over a longer period of time. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. All right, that brings us to Dennis McCarty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Dennis McCarty, a little bit seventeen, seventeen Second Avenue. I'm appearing as a citizen and also as a member of the board for Akela. And I understand you're probably having some deliberations tonight on what's happening. I'd like you to know that we have some problems with Akela and that we have sometimes on boards and whatever, you kind of, you're past your shelf life or it's like your own child, how you deal with it. And we are in the process of beginning our search. We've narrowed it down to, I think it's four candidates for new executive director and we have a new chairman. I just re, I just came on the board a year ago. I have a letter that I had a chance to see this morning and I'm still steaming. That is a marked improvement over the first draft I saw a week or so ago on what Akela would like to see in the revised new agreement, whatever, with the city. It is a different document, even apparently was presented to our chairman of our board for review and comments and then went out to the janitor. What I can tell, having an attorney for forty-one years in this town, and having dealt a lot with Akela and all the service organizations in town, the services are definitely needed and you guys have stepped up and provided facility and it seems to have worked quite well from what I can see. Most of you, or all of you that know me, will find it hard to believe, but have been on the board for a year and for the first time, I actually made any comments at one of our meetings. And I jumped three different times and did some serious chewing on Tuesday morning or Tuesday noon time. I believe that basically we should have the same agreement we had before with one that's been presented or prepared by the city. And I think we can get there and I'm very confident that majority of the board wants to do that. If you will, members of my profession, I think, stepped in, two of them are on the board and sat down with the director and started saying, "Well, gee, this could be an issue, but this could be an issue," and started drafting. You start doing that and sort of saying, "What's it take to make this happen and what's really important to get what's been presented from our side on Akela?" I would ask your patience. I would ask that you consider on behalf of members of the community that Akela has done a very good job. It is very highly thought of, the Ketchikan operation within the system, and I would ask cooler heads prevail. We should put something together and I don't think it's something that's much different than what I've seen that was drafted by the city. It may be there are two issues that came up. Well, there was some oil that was spilled way back when, so they're saying, "Well, we should have a full harmless case something comes up." If and when something came up, it was in the magnitude, I bet we could probably come to the city and talk and the magnitude resolve when we got it. But they're playing a whole lot of what ifs in the future. And we had a former board chair who was, I guess, a developer and he thought it would be wonderful to have this facility and be able to pledge a security for loans, so that's where came the revision. Well, we need clear title, let's get rid of the version there, clogs, kind of thinking, but this community has millions of dollars in the facility and the value in that land. And I would have been embarrassed as a, well, maybe not as a first-year attorney, but I didn't know much, but not very long after I made that presentation. If and when that were to come up, I suspect we could come back and talk to you about possibly taking a second position, for example, but not that you'd be a committed. Also, we've got a lot of dust raised up. It didn't need to be, and as far as I can tell, the situation has worked out magnificently for Akela as a whole. And from what I can tell, it has done well by this community, the services have been provided. And so, I would really ask you guys, trying to kind of bite my temper, please do the same and think of, well, you've got a gritted teeth a bit, but let's keep working together and let's make sure we put something together and Akela will continue functioning here. The costs, as Police Chief and some of the other people can tell you, are much cheaper to try and work it on the, on the treatment and than just trying to work it on the backside when things get out of hand and some of the issues, some of the people have really asked us. Enough said.
Thanks, Dennis.
Any questions?
Any questions for Dennis? Thank you. Mark Goodward, where are you? Come on up.
Your Honor, council members, Mark Goodward, one zero two seven Millar Street here in Ketchikan, representing the Stony Moose. And I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on what's going on and make a request as well. We've been open roughly forty hours and so we've, we've just kind of started, but I want you guys to know who's coming in. Everybody that, that, that on any type of socioeconomic scale is coming in. Not only locals, but we've had a lot of out-of-town people come in. When the Coast Guard ship was commissioned, we had a lot of people come into our store, first time that they've ever purchased legal cannabis, and it was a very enjoyable experience for them. And in fact, we had several out-of-town people come in tonight and they're spending the night. So, I said that this was going to be an economic engine and you're going to see part of it. The other thing, I bet you between thirty to forty percent of the people that come in are looking for an alternative to prescription pills. And a lot of people say how their, their spouse has cancer or is recovering from cancer and they, their stomach hurts when they take pills. And so, they talk to some of our employees about what they could do for that. And so, that's been a big thing. But the, the stat that has surprised me the most is there's more women coming in than men. And we didn't know why and so we just started asking. And we were told because they don't have to now rely on meeting up with somebody in a sketchy parking lot where it's dangerous and instead they have control of what they do and what they purchase. And that's big. And I never thought about that. But, but that's been a neat thing for us to be able to provide that and I never would have thought that. Secondly, let's talk taxes. I remember when we started this process, it seemed like a couple of years ago, there was a study that showed that, I don't know, I can't remember who did it, but they were thinking around forty thousand dollars in tax revenue was going to be created. In forty hours, we generated five thousand dollars in tax revenue. And that's without any advertising and barely being open. And so, we think that when our star starts going full-time and the cruise ship season starts and Jason's store down in front of City Flop gets going, you guys might be looking at half a million in tax revenue. I think that's a closer number than forty thousand. And we'll show you the numbers. It'll be there. And so, that, this might become a more important thing for you guys than you realize. And then that leads to, I guess, my request is the onsite consumption. That's still going to be a problem. And again, I've talked about that, if only five percent of the, of the cruise ship people want to consume, you're still talking over three hundred people a day. And as I've asked AMCO, where are they going to go? And we're now getting emails from people asking that, and what they say is, "We're excited." I have one from Hawaii, a guy's coming up with his wife at the end of May. He's retired. He would like to purchase legal cannabis, but he does not want to bring it back on board and so he's asking us where to go. And we don't have an answer for him. And so, the next meeting for AMCO is on May fifteenth and they're still considering these things. And I highly suggest that the city creates a letter of support because there, what is the alternative? You know, we can, we can police our area, our alleyway. That's it. That's as far as we can go. We'll take care of that. We'll make sure no one consumes there. But when someone walks out, I, and they go on the street, I can't stop them. And so, I'm just saying you guys should be aware of this because this is going to be a bigger problem than you realize. And again, I'm just talking five percent. We're hearing upwards of fifteen percent of the industry would like to consume. And, and, and lastly, with that and what we found, people want to follow the law. They really do. And that's why we have people coming in for the first time because they can come into our store and it's legal as long as you're twenty-one or over. And so, I just, again, want you guys to be aware of that. I'm going to send you guys tonight the email that I sent AMCO and, and like I said, please consider it. So, questions?
Any questions? Go ahead, Julie.
So, right now, only two people can go in your store at a time. Somebody's called and had been there and said there was a lineup outside and only two people.
Yeah. So, what we can have, we can, we can have, according to, it, it depends if, so we're, we're preparing our onsite lounge as if it's going to happen.
What if it doesn't though?
So, what we could do then is, is we've talked about that, we could do another retail store inside that other spot. So, we would have essentially a second room, not another store, I'm sorry, a second room is what we would have.
So, right now, the retail will only accommodate two people at once?
Uh, we can, we can get four people in there pretty comfortably.
So, you get fifteen percent of the?
Yes. And Jason's store, I don't want to speak for Jason, but his, I don't know if he knows where his is, it's by Twisted Tree. His is considerably larger than ours. And I don't know how many staff members, you can usually have five people for one licensed AMCO person, like with your handler's card, usually five people for that. So, you could, if he has four handlers, he can have twenty people in there at once.
So, who's going to manage crowd control and?
Uh, we have outside security sitting there as well as a surveillance system.
Super, thank you.
Dick and David, Julie.
Yeah, Mark, two questions. One, the source of your supply and who's testing it for you?
There's two testing systems up in Anchorage. Cana Test, I think, is what they are. There was one in Juneau and the lady just decided not to go through with it. And then, we can only receive tested product. And so, that's, that's how that works. And then, the, right now, the way the AMCO sets us up, the growers have to supply the product. We can't go get it from them.
So, your product's being shipped in from Anchorage?
Or, we went, Sitka and Fairbanks.
Say again?
Sitka, Anchorage and Fairbanks, yes.
Okay. How's it coming in?
They could address that.
Julie?
I just wondered, of the five thousand in taxes, how, what percentage of that is state compared to local?
It's all local. There's no state. It's you, it's the six point five plus the five percent extra.
Okay.
So, yeah. And I'm sure right now it's closer to six thousand because I, I'm working right now is how to go back.
Yeah, the question.
It's just, it's a lot more than you think.
Mark?
With two or four people coming in at a time, how long of a line, or how long are people waiting outside and how far from your building is it?
It's, it seems like it's pretty much contained in the alleyway. We could set up more, we're working to set up the alleyway a little bit better than what it is because, you know, that, that picture's, the alleyway is going to be taken a picture of probably a hundred thousand times this summer, if not more. And so, we're going to make it nice and neat. We're working with the local businesses. But we could probably contain it as much as we can in there by fifty, sixty people before it starts stretching down this, you know, down the street. So.
Anybody else? Tom?
So, just for clarification, your product is coming in from out of town?
Yes.
I thought that wasn't supposed to happen.
It's the coal memo. It, the coal memo covers that.
It covers the transportation through federal waters?
How, yes. How the coal memo works basically is the federal government says, "We're going to give the state the jurisdiction to do what they want. As long as they have a level of enforcement that is, that is okay, they're going to let the state do that." And why we want, I mean, we have manifests that we have to follow. If we don't follow a manifest correctly, we can have our license pulled immediately. So, it behooves us to follow that manifest. And so, that's, that's how that works.
Through the discussions, I think we were led to believe that the cannabis growers would have to grow it on the island to supply the?
They are, but again, they're also, I mean, they can answer that question, I guess, but they, it's a seller's market right now for growers.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, I feel like I was led to believe one thing and other things are happening. So, it makes me a little reluctant to, to jump out there and support something because I'm not entirely sure how the end product will look.
Sure. Well, your question's right.
So, I mean, when we started down this option, and correct me if I'm wrong, council, we were led to believe that the cannabis to be consumed in Ketchikan had to be grown on the island.
I don't, I don't remember the discussion.
I mean, that's the way, everything has changed, you know, once we got, heard, let's, this is the way it's supposed to be, things have changed. Every time we turn around, there's a new change or ruling or letter or whatever, so it's been constantly changing.
They're letting them use credit, you mean?
What is the local, do we have any guys that are, that are growing here and ready to go yet or?
Close, yes. But I don't know who they're selling the product to.
I just wonder if they're up and running.
Yes, they are.
There's no testing here, so they have to send it down.
They have to, they have to, yes, to Anchorage.
And they couldn't start growing until after they received the license, so they would have a six-month, I think, break, six months before they would even have product.
Any other questions?
There is none on the island to purchase.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Hey, that brings us down to Sean Farland.
Hi, Sean McFarland with Moffin and Nickel out of Anchorage and I'm here to support our request for the approval of our proposal for additional upland planning for your port facilities. I'm here tonight to answer any questions that you have. I know that's on your agenda for later, so I'm pleased to answer any questions you have now or, or later. And just once again, thank you for the work that you've been giving us. We hope that we've been satisfying the city's needs in your, your port developments and as the project manager for those projects, I'm here to answer any questions you have or any comments, good or bad.
Thanks for coming. If we have any questions, we'll hit you at the item time.
Very good, thanks.
Jesse Embry?
Hello.
Welcome.
Mayor and council, Jesse Embry, thirteen fifty Peyton Place. I put in a proposal to have the fee waived for the Tedbury Civic Center in support of the two thousand seventeen grad, class graduation K High graduates. We have had, they've worked hard for four years to be on their way, whether they stay here in Ketchikan or go off to college. There are a hundred and forty-eight graduates this year, seniors at K High, and thirty-two on track for graduation at La Villa. And we do include them in all of our graduation activities and events. It's been a tradition every year to provide a safe and fun event or several events for the class. And it's a way just to keep them busy and I can't reiterate more of the safety involved in that, to keep them busy through the night. And all the parents get together and they, we break off into committees and we kind of tackle the different events. It's a lot to take on, but we have a lot of support and the parents are really excited to provide this, these events for the students who are graduating. I think it would be a great opportunity for the city to congratulate the class this year. And we, the facility at the plaza is no longer available and it's, there's very few facilities that would accommodate that many students. And so, I just want to ask for your consideration in waiving the fee for the graduates for the evening of the twenty-eighth after graduation at the Tedbury Civic Center. We plan to have all of the same activities and prizes and congratulations to all, congratulations to all of the students during that evening and it will be run by parent volunteers. And that will run from eight PM, specifically the graduation party, eight PM to two AM. And then, they will move to Ocean View, who has donated their facility for breakfast. And the Rec Center has donated their facility every year for the prom party. Sunny Point Conference Room has donated their facility for the prom itself. And they will be having the prom breakfast at the Rec Center this year as well. Many benefit businesses, a lot of businesses here in Ketchikan have supported these events every single year and we just are very appreciative to everyone and we hope that you guys can help out as well.
Any questions for Jesse? Thank you very much.
Can I mention something?
You bet.
I actually do have a, I don't know if this is appropriate to ask the council, but I do have a question in regards to if it were to go through, if we would need liability insurance.
That's a good question to ask after we figure it out. Thank you. All right, that's everybody on, oh, no, Agnes, Sam, Marianne, apologize.
Agnes Marianne, three twenty-seven South Point Higgins Road.
Sam Cory, twenty-one ninety-six South Thomas Highway.
And we're here tonight wearing our First City Homeless Services hats. So, and the mission statement of First City Homeless Services is to offer the homeless access to safe, non-genital shelter and referrals to local resources. And the First City does that very well from eight to four every day with their day shelter. But as everyone in this community knows, the needs of the homeless people don't end at four o'clock and it's been an issue. And so, last fall, you folks recognized it, a group of us got together and put together a plan with Sam, myself, Ever, Lee, Jamie Palmer and Katie Teepass, who was in town at the time. And we put together, we worked hard and put together a plan for a warming center. And we took that plan down to the Salvation Army and sat down with Captain Randy and kind of explained our plan to him and was hoping he'd come on board. And he kind of surprised us and said, "I'll do this." And he did, and he opened the warming center. And it was operating up until March thirty-first of this year and I think it was a very successful endeavor, but it was done entirely by volunteer. There was no paid staff, community donations, it was done that way. And when we started this endeavor, we were going to come in front of you with numbers. I don't have the numbers yet, but as soon as I get them, I will bring them forward. But I do have a few numbers that I think are kind of interesting. And during the winter, the average number of folks who spent the night at the warming center averaged from twelve in the early months to as high of twenty-two later on. And the first night they opened, they had four people, but their high during the winter, during the harsh weather was thirty-six. And so, it was very well used. But what these numbers don't show is that last winter, we observed, unlike previous winters, that we didn't lose anybody in our homeless community to floating down the channel. They had a safe place to be at night. And the other thing that's not quite as visible is that we also didn't observe in the homeless community any hypothermia, there was no trench foot, and we had no reports of frostbite. And, and those are good numbers, especially for you folks who run a hospital, because these folks don't show up in your emergency room with a, with an insurance card. So, that's, that's money in your pocket. Yeah, but the warming center, as an all-volunteer organization, is just not sustainable in its current plan. But First City Homeless Services is committed to the homeless community and what we've done is we've gone out and we've applied for a VISTA. And what this VISTA is going to do is it's going to spend a year with us at First City Homeless Services and it's going to survey the needs of the homeless community and the greater community as a whole. And hopefully by the end of that year, after working with different elements of the community, after just observing this from all different angles, she's going to come home, come up with some options for us for moving forward. And we know folks have come in front of you, offering to sell you that service, but we just wanted to let you know that we've taken that on at First City Homeless Services and put in for a VISTA. She's showing up in January of two thousand and eighteen and she's already been in the community as an AmeriCorps VISTA and she's going to be working with us on this very issue. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. So, I, I'm behind you a hundred percent on surveying, but what do we do next winter when it gets cold again? Are we going to be able to reopen the warming thing or that's, that's the new issue?
The goal is, you know, the goal is to reopen it in, in October. We chose October through March for a couple of reasons because we wanted to be done with our local population. When you get outside of that one, do you have more transients? What we don't know right now is the location that it's going to be. There's a high potential that it will go back to the Salvation Army. There's some issues there, excuse me, there's, there's some issues there. They don't have an They don't have an overhead sprinkler system. And in theory, there's two opinions on this. In theory, without an overhead sprinkler system, you're only supposed to be sleeping 10 people. The need is much higher than that has been demonstrated. So we've had, they've had as many as 36 in there. So that, that's one option. Beyond that, we have a summer to figure it out.
Do you have any questions? Should you?
And so if it reopens, will we make sure that the volunteers are trained? Because this year, I believe that was one of the issues, and that's kind of dangerous.
Yeah, we took that, First City Homeless Services again took that on. We took one of the volunteers and were sure that they got their first aid and CPR training and mat training?
They have done that yet.
Yeah, but they're going to get mat training too. So we've, we've taken that on also.
Super. Thank you.
Has anybody looked into what it would cost for a sprinkler system for that building?
We have not.
We have general numbers, but it's 45 to 50 grand.
And the other issues there is, is that there's not a commitment from the Umbrella Salvation Army Organization. And actually, Captain Randy has kind of gone above and beyond this last winter. He really was only supposed to be open when the weather was inclement, and he was open every night.
Hey.
Well, keep in mind that originally there was $70,000,000 in our budget to help deal with this on a short-term basis. It's still there, it wasn't, wasn't part of the grant stuff, so if you guys need, if you guys need money in some way for this, this thing, to make sure this place opens again in October, Paul.
And that's what we're hoping, is that you guys won't fritter that away, because we are, we are.
How long do you wait? Ask us now, you'll get it. Ask us in six months.
But we want it, we want a smart ask. You know, we're not going to, and that's why we're, we're still waiting to get the numbers in and get them crunched. And we should know here shortly if there's going to be a change of the guard at the Salvation Army, for example, or, you know, what, what the plans are there. So there's a lot of unknowns right now. But we still have our original plan, and we still have, you know, we still have a commitment and to doing this.
So what I'd like to emphasize is that there's two plans going on simultaneously. One's the short term, and that's next fall. Okay, next fall and possibly the fall after that. But then we have the VISTA volunteer who is currently in town right now. She's been here, she knows what Ketchikan is, she's not going to be running. And she is enthusiastic about working, but that's a long-term, and we're hoping that, and she desires of these two, is to provide us with multiple options that are reasonable for this town under these conditions. So that's what we really wanted to inform the council about, is we are continuing to work, and we're intending, I mean, we intend to go forward.
Any other questions? You bet.
What would you folks like to see, or would you like to see something year-round for locals? It still gets pretty cold in there.
Yeah, well, that's part of the long-term plan with the VISTA. What our experience has been, and I've been doing this for quite a while now, probably shouldn't have, is that you get, you get a big bump up in the summertime, and you get, I mean, we had, we've had seasonal, people that come in for seasonal work, and they eat at the Lord's Table, and, you know, take advantage of the services for the truly homeless in the community. And, you know, they're trying to maximize how much money they send home, so we understand that. But we really want to focus on our people, and we know we can do that if we do it from October through March. And then, you know, later on, if it makes sense, or depending on what the VISTA does or comes up with, maybe there is a plan to expand that. And, you know, we don't, we don't know what that looks like, and I don't want to say what that looks like. But what I am really excited about is, I ain't not getting any younger, and we've got, you know, a lot of young, I'm ready to hand it off, or at least hand off the solution to someone that has the first set of eyes and a lot more energy. And I think there is that generation coming up, and I'd like to have them involved in the solution.
Any other questions? Thank you both of you.
Thank you.
All right, that was the last group signed up to speak. Is there anybody that didn't get a chance to sign up and like to address the council tonight? Come on up.
So I'm Nancy T.G., and I am with, I live at 393 Hillside. I am also on the Akila Board, and we, we had a meeting on Tuesday of the Board, and there was a definite cha, we got a definite feeling in the Board that we were supportive of the contract more of what was originally set up than what has been presented. So we, Dennis and I particularly, plus two other Board members, for sure are on board to work hard to get this corrected and moving in the right direction. So if you have any questions for either Dennis or I or Joel, we're more than willing to.
Thank you very much, Nancy.
Answer anything.
You bet. All right, that brings us to anybody else who wants to address the council tonight? See you then, we'll move on into the agenda. Before we get into consent agenda, I do have a resolution tonight for our gentleman who retired from the city of Ketchikan, I'd like to read that. It's a resolution of the council of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska, recognizing Larry Carls for his years of service at the Department of Public Works for the city of Ketchikan and establish an effective date, whereas Larry has been employed at the city of Ketchikan for 21 years from December 11, 1995, to April 7, 2017, in the Public Works Department. During those years, he served as the solid, as a solid waste collector and solid waste operator for the Department of Public Works, whereas Larry, Larry's ability to help ensure the solid waste division's operation in efficient manner has benefit, has benefited the city of Ketchikan and the citizens of Ketchikan, whereas Larry has always been willing to assist other departments and divisions wherever needed. Whereas Larry has gained the respect and friendship of his fellow employees through his warm personality, whereas Larry added to the, added to the positive professional image of the solid waste division operation and apartment, and the Department of Public Works. Larry has represented in the best interest of the citizens of Ketchikan, has been dedicated and committed, a committed public works employee, now therefore be resolved by the city, or by the council of the city of Ketchikan as follows. Section 1, the council of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska recognizes, commends Larry for his dedicated service and significant contribution to the public works, solid waste division and the community. 2, the council of the city of Ketchikan wishes Larry success in his future. And 3, this resolution is affected immediately upon passage and approval. Larry, are you here? I was just going to put it in with the others. Larry, thanks for your service. If you want to say a few words, you can. All right, thank you, Larry. All right, that brings us down to consent agenda. We have some recommendations. I was thinking, um.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
If I may.
You bet.
Larry didn't want to say any words. What I do. I hired Larry as a young man. He came out of Sitka, Sitka mill had closed, the job market there had slowed down, and Larry moved to Ketchikan. Over the years, Larry, I think, has exemplified what I feel the solid waste has done in the community, and the fact that they always looking to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. They go out of their way, whether it be at the landfill or out in the trucks, in the collection, to help our community out, to try to find solutions for them, and they go that extra mile. So I'd just like to thank Larry for all of his service. I relied on him a lot when I ran the division, and he always stepped up to the plate. Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Bob. Under consent agenda, as I was thinking, 6A1 and 2, and B1 under unfinished business, and under new business, I was thinking of 7A1, which we just did, and then B2 and 3, the two awards of the trucks. Does anybody have any problems with those? Gary, none? We'll add those to the consent. Do we have a motion to consent?
So moved in.
Second.
Moved in second. Madam clerk, do you want to read items?
Affirmative minutes, regular city council meeting of April 6, 2017. Third, revised agreement between the city of Ketchikan and the University of Alaska Southeast Administration of the Ketchikan Campus Library. The grant agreement between Southern and Southeast Regional Aquaculture Association and Ketchikan Public Utilities, Whitman Lake Hattery and Whitman Lake Powerhouse Access Right-of-Way Caging, exempting the procurement of LRA, which is LTE in Rural America, 4G/LTE software upgrades from the competitive bid and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. That's what Eric's interpreted. Ordinance number 171849, amending subsection A of section 11.04.040 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Deposits in Second Reading. Ordinance number 171844, authorizing negotiation of an agreement with Bigger Alaska LLC to repair and refurbish the city's berth three passenger facility barge. That's in second reading. Ordinance number 171846, amending chapter 11.12, telecommunications service and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's in second reading. Resolution number 172660, recognizing Larry J. Carls for his years of service at the Department of Public Works for the city of Ketchikan. The award of contract number 1709, which is a small bucket truck, Time Manufacturing Company, and the award of contract number 1710, it's a telephone line truck for Time Manufacturing Company.
Anybody have any questions on any of the consent items? See you then? Call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
That passes 7 to nothing. That brings us down to 6A B2, 6A B2, no, 6B2. Ordinance number 171847, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code 11.16, entitled Water Rates to Provide an Increasing Water Rate for Seafood Processors and Allied Industries, second reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
You go ahead.
I move the city council to approve in second reading, ordinance number 171847, amending Ketchikan Municipal Code, chapter 11.16, entitled Water Rate to Provide for an Increase in Water Rate to Seafood Processors and Allied Industries, providing a date for a public hearing and establish an effective date.
Second. Moved in second. Bob, do you?
Yeah, and I appreciate Paul being here, and I don't want to paint the fish processors in a negative light, such as the words of subsidy. But we have a study done by FCS, independent outfit, looking at our water rates and the different classes of services that we provide. And what we're looking for is equitable, you know, some equitable in the, in the rate classes. The fish processors do benefit the community, and where they made mention of the fact that only 2% of the water is in treatment. You pay a utility rate to support the utility. Your, and I brought this up last time, in your electrical business, that kilowatt pays for whatever it takes to get that power to your house. It's not just the water coming out of a lake and what it takes to manufacture it. And that's the way it is with the water to all of our customers. Even at the 35% rate, and we've been at this for a number of years, they're still going to have some of the cheaper water rates in Southeast Alaska. We originally thought about going to a metered rate, which I think is a fairer rate. In the FCS study, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but it was somewhere between 600 and 1,000% that they had to raise the fish processors, so they, if you charge them for 100% of their cost of water. And that's not what we're intending to do here by any means. But we need to get them closer. And it's not just to balance the budget on the fish processors back. We're going to look at other rates too, be it sewer, water, power, garbage, whatever it is, the city provides the service and they have to pay for that. Our, our population base isn't growing, but our costs definitely are, whatever they may be. And so as a utility, it's always tough to raise those rates, but the Water Department has been in the negative column for at least four years running. If you were to do that for one year, you'd step back and say, well, maybe something changed, and we can do this, and the weather storm won't come out the other end of it. But when you consistently are doing that, you have to address your water utility. You have to look at the structure. We've looked at the budget. We are mandated by federal standards to meet drinking water regulations, and we do have infrastructure that supplies this water to everybody. And so you do the stuff that you do in operations and budgeting, you scale back on capital projects tremendously, but the fact is, is they're going in the hole. We have to address the rates, and, and the fish processors are just part of that rate. Again, as the study may point out, the residential rate for the amount of services that they're receiving, they're paying more than their fair share based on gallonage and use. But again, we're paying for the whole utility to operate whatever we do through the year. So where, I don't think anybody likes to raise rates, and I don't think any of us on this council thinks ill of our fish processors. Fish processing's been part of this community for years and years. We have a job to do, and they have a job to do. That's why I'm supporting the utility rate. We can't continue to not do anything. That's not an option. If we do that, we use up our reserves. We, the Water Department has been funded through telecommunications for a number of years. Telecommunications, they don't know what you can do that. So each department has to figure out how they can stand on their own, and that's why we're doing this.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yep.
Isom?
No.
Kiper?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 5 to 2. That brings us down to 7A2 Budget Transfer Contract, 1719, Upland Planning to Support Expanded Marine Facilities and Larger Cruise Vessels, Moffett and Nickel. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council to approve a professional services agreement with Moffett and Nichols for contract number 1719, Upland Planning to Support Expanded Marine Facilities and Larger Cruise Vessels. In the amount of not to exceed $187,998 authorized a budget transfer, the amount of $184,998 from the Port Enterprise Reserves to the Upland Planning to support expanded marine facilities and larger cruise vessel capital account, direct the city manager to execute a contract on behalf of city council.
Second. Moved in second. Dick?
Yeah, this is something we need to do, and we've talked about doing it. I, I'm going to say a couple of things, though. I guess I'm, we know we've got four births, and we know that we're very narrowly organized on the waterfront. So I, I hope we don't have some expectations of going to be magic that makes the streets wider and the streets more accessible. And, and with that being said, I, I'm a little bit concerned about the amount of money that it says we're going to take to do this, and I'm also thinking that the public has to be involved upfront and before, a little bit quicker than what I see in the, in the scope of work. Because they're the ones that's got to, they're going to get the impact. And, and the people that are down there in the summer are going to be the impact. So I guess I'm expressing some support, but some concerns, and hopefully we can keep the cost under control and not come up with a whole lot of expectations, because we've got, only got so many roads and so many places we can go.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuse?
Yes.
All right, that passes 7 to nothing. Brings us down to 7A3, Request for Use, Free Use of the Tedbury Civic Center Class of 2017. I don't think we need a motion. Do we have four people in hands in favor of doing such a thing? One, two, three. All right. We don't have four hands, it will not be done. Okay, that brings us. Okay, that brings us down to 7B1, overview of the Southeast Alaska Power Agency. Troy, are you here? They can use the machine?
I am. We can get our fingers out.
Get my finger. Put your finger in the 220 socket.
I'm trying.
I'm sorry, community promotions.
I'm thinking of that airport artwork.
There's only 5,000 more.
There's not a lot.
If you lower that cost, you lower that.
I think of only these 500s.
We definitely send delegation for people that are not in flight.
Good, great alcohol.
I think I've got a select.
Really?
Yeah, one would be exactly.
How many did you change?
How about that?
I think they made it smaller.
Well, good evening. Happy to be here. Figured it was, I've been here for a while to provide a little update on SEPA.
Troy, can you introduce yourself?
Sure. Troy Axson, CEO of the Southeast Alaska Power Agency.
Thank you.
For folks who may not be familiar with our organization, we provide about 50% of the power for Ketchikan and about 60% for the region. We own Swan Lake Power Plant and the Taiyi Power Plant and 175 miles of transmission line and about 14 miles of submarine cable as well. We're a joint action agency. We're governed by our three member utilities. The mayor's appoints the directors to our board out of those three communities of Ketchikan, Petersburg, and Rink. And if you have a question along the way, just go ahead and stop me. So I always like to start off with lake levels. Everybody's always interested in that. Call your attention to the yellow if you can here. Just gives you a kind of a sense of where we've been over the last few years on lake levels. This is Swan Lake. 271 is our FERC minimum. And our new full pole height will be 345, used to be 330, but with the Swan Lake expansion, we have more storage in there now. As you can see, this is about the place you guys burn some diesel right here, and then now we've got inflows coming in from the snow melt and some rain as well. Taiyi, this has been a very perfect draft this year, and as like the other chart there as well, this line down here is the guide curve, and that's a rough rule of thumb that we try to stay above or just stay above it. And if we track that fairly close, then inflows are coming in fairly traditional into the reservoir. And just so you know, we expect to spill at Taiyi this year and most likely at Swan as well. We did a snow survey Friday before last, estimated approximately of the equivalent of about 40 inches of raining that's on the hillside. And about one inch of rain is equivalent to about a foot in the reservoir at Swan and about .8 feet in Taiyi. So just a little bit about SEPA, we've been doing a lot of continued reinvestment in our projects. The projects are over 30 years old now. So as you know, as you guys are very familiar with the aging infrastructure, you have to maintain it, but we do have an extremely high liability rate. Swan Taiyi Intertie was brought on in 2009, which interconnected the two powerhouses in north and south from Petersburg all the way to Ketchikan. Taiyi weir, I'll picture that in a second. That was completed in 2013, and we're still doing periodic sealing on the large boulders that are in the crotch of that outlet area there. And that was to preserve water that was leaking through the rocks on the outlet stream. Plus, we're required by FERC to measure that. Swan Lake expansion, that was substantially complete last November, and just doing some small cleanup items now, but we're completely ready to impound water when it comes. And we actually did impound some water last year, so we already got some value out of it. So that's a good thing. Supervisory control data acquisition, you guys are all familiar with SCADA, communications upgrades, exciter and switchgear. We'll be doing a big project this year at Swan Lake. Helipad installations, we put about 100 pads up on the Swan Taiyi Intertie last year, and we'll be doing some other work on those as well this year. Range old reactor replacements were completed last year. We're doing some hydro site housing updates for the employees out there. As this stuff gets 30 years old, you have to do some of that stuff, and of course, pole replacements have needed. This is just some of the highlights of a few things over the last few years. Swan Lake reservoir expansion, I'll forward the pictures to the council and city and borough. People can see it, the lighting's not so well, but anyway, this is the gates in here, and then these flashboard panels here are designed to migrate downstream.
Hold on just a minute.
Sure.
Can we hit the lights back there a little?
Might help these guys see a little bit. Oh, that's great, thank you. Yeah, so anyway, this used to just be a fixed fillway in here, and this now fills that up and allows us to bank another 15 feet of water in there.
Hey, Troy, explain how that's working.
So, so this gate will modulate with lake level, and we're looking right now at how we might do some forward forecasting into the control of the gate tied to weather, so we can tighten that up just a little bit. And then these flashboards here have a trigger mechanism on the backside. If for some reason this, we have a 500-year flood event, and this thing is designed actually for an event that's actually never occurred in history at the project. But if in that event, we have this huge, huge mass of inflow while the lake level's already high, and we have certain amount of water going over the top, these panels here will just migrate downstream and essentially protect the dam. So at Swan Lake, we did some safety enhancements up here. This is essentially a barricade here to give the guys up there a little bit more protection while they're pulling debris out of the lake. I'll talk about some of our debris challenges here in just a second. This is part of the parapet wall that goes on the abutment of the dam here. This is the dam coming across over on this side here. Mentioned it before, we're doing Swan Lake exciter and switchgear replacements. These larger cabinets here will be replaced, and that will take place hopefully before the end of our fiscal year. We have contracts in place, materials are already out of sight. This last slide happened up at Swan Lake last fall, and if you look really close, these are some, it's a really, really big tree down here. This is like three football fields, and this is all woody debris here that eventually migrates down the lake to the dam. So I'm going to segue over here to Taiyi now. We've obviously got woody debris buildups there as well. These large boulders here came off the hillside, who knows how many years ago, and formed this outlet of the lake. And there's a little bit of white down here, that was actually spilled that was coming out through the rocks, and we wanted to impound the maximum amount of license let's us do on the lake, plus we have a requirement by FERC to measure spill at this, at this. So this next slide will kind of put this in perspective. So this is the backside of these rocks, or I should say the upstream side, and this is the weir that we installed. So that duff where all those trees were at, we anticipate it's at least 100 feet deep. And it's just this rotten woody debris, and it's been, so all that stuff was cut up by hand and pitched over the side. It was, it was quite the effort just to get it clear so we could actually install over there. And then over here, these guys are installing the safety shelter up at Taiyi. It's in a bowl up there, it's very hard to access, and occasionally we have to do work on there upon measuring devices and stuff, and it'll have emergency rations and also we'll have some consequences if there's one. Another item we're working on that's a challenge is, this is at Taiyi, for folks that aren't familiar with it, our access into the plant dock is in through this way, and we've had this massive amount of silting here. They dredged all this out several years back and put it over in this area and over here. It's a lot of material, and right now we're looking at a longer-term permanent solution to actually relocate our dock out here in the deeper water area that's not impacted by that silt. We're working with the Corps, they support this effort, and actually expressed an interest to donate a portion of money to help us out. Unfortunately, their budgets are tied up in DC right now, so we're still working with them. If that doesn't pan out, and what would it be, it'd be a road along the tide water here. And we thought it was good to get them involved in the process early on and get their buy-in on it, or look at other potential solutions to solve this. But they're supportive of this, and we actually have spoils that came out of the original tunneling at the plant that would allow us to do that for the material cost, but we have already got the materials on site. So other major activities, just I guess got a list here, I'll just talk through them real quick. We're going to add a new Swan Lake debris boom with debris screens that come down 24 inches out at the site, which is going to help us mitigate some of that slide that I showed you earlier. Also, remember we're going to be raising the lake level up by 15 feet, so we'll have more woody debris entering the lake over the next several years. We're also going to be replacing the marker balls on the Taiyi transmission line. Obviously got our annual transmission line maintenance and line clearing that we do. The Swan Taiyi helipads that we installed, now we have to go in and get some, put some, install ladders and access up onto the platforms so people can actually safely get off to them, off of them, because many of them are very, very steep terrain. And then also after that, then we have to cut trails to the towers. And what that whole effort is for is so people can safely access our transmission line to make emergency repairs and new maintenance. Marine terminal monitoring upgrades, we're doing a number of things there to enhance our monitoring of those. That's tied to our undersea cables. We're doing a Taiyi needle valve feedback replacement, and I know that sounds kind of exotic, but essentially it measures these needle valves that go down and control the water going into the pelting wheels. And we, so we've designed a new system to do that. We had some repetitive leaking on those. Satellite communication systems, we've had to update that. We're just turning that up at Swan. We had to change providers at the end of the year because our first provider went out of business. So we had to relocate equipment in a different state and put in new equipment, re-point the satellite, a bunch of other effort to make that transition. Once we get that proved out, we'll do the same at Taiyi. We've already got some key infrastructure in place there. We had over a year of permitting just to get permitting to put a platform in to handle the dish there because it was slightly off of our project in order to view the satellite on the horizon. Hydro site point housing, mentioned that, doing some updates. Also doing on our Taiyi turbine shut-off toroidal cylinder repairs. It's a, it's a real exotic actuator, it's actually curved and it's chromed. We're seeing some corrosion and stuff on that, and so that'll be a challenge you want. Taiyi transformer bushing replacement, damaged transformer there, bushing, excuse me. And we've been working for the last couple of years really hard on system alarm trip protection updates to make sure things alarm when they're supposed to. And also the range old switchgear that we installed last year, we're adding CTs in relation to that to enhance our feedback on that system. So let's move over to some external initiatives, and this is probably an area that a lot of folks aren't familiar with what SEPA does. And we're a strong advocate for hydro development, and I'm working really hard at multiple levels to, I'll say, make our job to, for the next increment of hydro easier and cheaper. So there's a number of issues I'm working on right now. First of all, is FERC hydro license durations. There's been a transition over to 30-year, it's been kind of arbitrary for if you go to relicence, and this is a big thing with Swan and Taiyi. It's going to cost several million dollars and about seven years of effort to relicence those projects. So right now, we're trying to work on, in DC to get some of these standards, and at a minimum, we'd like to see relicensing at 40 years and new licenses at 50. So I've been working with multiple groups on that. We've worked with National Hydro Association, very active with those guys, I'm vice president of the Northwest Hydroelectric Association, and also manager of the Forum for the Alaska Power Association and on their hydro working group as well. So Lost Creek Land Convenience, that's a section up in the upper reaches of Swan Lake that when they did the original land transfer, they missed 25.8 acres, and we discovered this when we were doing some surveying, when we did the recent Swan expansion. And they draw boxes around these areas when they transfer them, and they just missed it. So anyway, we're working hard. I actually have legislation in both the House and Senate in DC on that issue right now. And it's a big issue that probably saves us about a million dollars when we go to relicence if we can get that fed land out of our project. Also working hard to get hydropower reclassified as a renewal. It seems pretty stupid that it's not. I think it's the best renewable we have ever, renewable resource we've ever had. It supports all other renewables across the US. And so what that does is that will then open up potential Fed money for projects that fall under the renewable classification. We also experienced a 71% land use fee increase, and we've got some letters into FERC right now, but they've had a hard time establishing a forum at FERC, so there's not much getting done at that level. We're also trying to establish agency timelines and accountability. One problem with the licensing process is there's not a puppet master there. These different processes and timelines get shifted over to different agencies, and they don't have any accountability. And what I'd like to see in many others in our industry is that they do set these timelines, and if for some reason they don't meet their deadlines, then we have the ability, either it is accepted just by virtue of not replying, or in some instances, say on the, if the Forest Services reviewing a permit and they say we don't have enough resources, well, okay, fine, recognizing that you don't, let's go hire a consultant. I'm happy to pay for it, but let's get my permit processed in a timely fashion. So there's a number of areas that we're working on. Of course, many of you already know that SEPA's have been in strong opposition to the oldest rule, and we filed the weakest brief on that a couple of different times and different efforts to get that exemption back in. And then I've got a number of issues I'm working with Laps, the DNR on, with Swan Lake Water Right adjudication that we had to change our water rate claim with the Swan Lake raise, and some land reclamation reserves that were required to keep when you build a project similar to a mining project, you have to spend, put a certain amount in each year. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to get that changed over to a bond so we can stop putting in money and just building up this bank account and just have a bond that covers us for that. Also working on some transmission line easements and still just trying to get access to clear some of the work lines. And if for some reason they don't meet their deadlines, then we have the ability, either it is accepted just by virtue of not replying, or in some instances, say on the, if the Forest Service is reviewing a permit and they say, "We don't have enough resources." Well, okay, fine. Recognizing that you don't, let's go hire a consultant. I'm happy to pay for it, but let's get my, my permit processed in a timely fashion. So there's a number of areas that we're working on. Of course, many of you already know that SEPA's have been in strong opposition to the robust rule, and we filed the weakest brief on, on that a couple of different times and the different efforts to, to get that exemption back in. So. And then I've got a number of issues I'm working with the lapse of DNR on, with Swan Lake water right adjudication that we had to change our water right claim with the Swan Lake Graves, and some land reclamation reserves that were required to keep when you build a project similar to a mining project. You have to spend, put a certain amount in each year. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to get that changed over to a bond, so we can stop putting in money and just building up this bank account and just have a bond that covers us for that. Also working on some transmission line easements and, and still just trying to get access to clear some of our lines. So a little planning for the future, and everybody's interested in this. I put this slide up a lot on, on many of the presentations I do, and there's just one key area I love people to, to, to focus on. It's right here. Our whole system, from Petersburg, Wrangle, down to Ketchikan, is less than 12,000 meters. So when people get excited about building a new project, new projects going to be more than likely in the $100 million to $200 million range, depending on size, location, and several other factors. You got to recover that debt through only 12,000 meters. So timing of the next project's going to be hugely important. And for folks that aren't familiar with our system, this red line right here, that is the Swan Taiyi intertie that was added in 2009 that connected the whole system. So let's talk system load forecasting just for a second. And I hope, I apologize if I'm going too long here, Mr. Mayor. So just to give you an idea, so the black line over here, this is our actual usage over the last 10 years. So if you could, you see here, about 2011, 2012, our, our whole system is lower, right? It's going down. And that's not where it was really forecasted. It was forecasted to go up this way. A lot of this can be attributed to weather, but there's some other factors that go into that. And some of that could be, you know, LED lighting and just more efficiency, also potential population impacts as well. So when we get on this other side, so for the blue line is, that's a, that's your average expected total on our hydro system. So in a low year, it might be down here, and a higher, it might be a period a little higher, but for the most part, it's on the blue line. The black dotted line, that's kind of where we think things are going to end up. That's a half percent annual growth across the three communities. And, you know, if you think about what the population's doing in, in the, in southeast and across the state, I think that that's, that's a pretty relative reasonable estimate. The red is a 1.25 growth, and I think things would really have to turn around instead to change that trajectory. Our load, our load forecast, if, if you look at all the details, and we presented this to the board at, at our last meeting, it is strongly tied to population. So, and everything that I'm seeing in population is, is supposed to decline. You know, some of the forecasts I'm seeing are, you know, right now, we're losing about 2,000 jobs a month in Alaska. Supposed to lose between 25 and 33,000 jobs in the next 36 months. And, and you're seeing budget cuts. So I can't help but think some of that's going to trickle down to this area. But I'm hoping we're going to have a fairly soft landing because we, we have some other mechanisms. I just threw this one slide in here real quick, just to demonstrate that this is our system, SEPA Hydroelectric System, and this is just daily min and max. So this is where we, we start to look at, and, and I'll point out, this is 2014. So this year, we have some higher peaks up in here. But our peaks for capacity, and this is how many megawatts our system can put out, not the amount of energy or the gases in your gas tank, it's just how much power you can put out. And so if you, if you look up here, we, we don't get up in these peaking areas that often. So sometimes we'll make the statement that it's okay to burn a little bit of diesel. So if you have to, had to burn a little diesel here to meet load for a few days because you had extremely cold temperatures, you know, you might, you got to weigh that against what's the cost of a $100 million project and the debt service should pay on that. Now, if you started to see these peaks up here a lot more, then, you know, then your projects sort of pencil them out a little faster. So talking about future development, everybody in this room hopefully should know by now, we've been doing a regional hydro side investigation. This was anticipated to be a, a five-year project and should be completed by the end of this year. And the whole purpose of this project was to, some of the findings in the Southeast Integrated Resource Plan were that there were, there was a lack of information on certain projects, and it just wasn't very levelized. And, and I guess I'll, I'll temper this, that every single project's different. So you're really not ever truly going to have a levelized amount of knowledge on each project and for apples to apples comparison. But for the most part, you can gather information. So on our system, and we looked at our, our utility corridor, because when you get outside of that, transmission's really expensive. About $2 million a mile. So the further you get away from the transmission, the less economical, especially some of these smaller projects get. And this was grant funded by $1.7 million. And if you know the hydro business, you could put, spend $1.7 million just investigating one single site. And our corridor has at least 60 projects in it. So we quickly narrowed that bandwidth down to the projects that were, also had the most likelihood of being able to be a realistic asset. And so we've got about a dozen projects that were, that we've looked at. We've gone out into, and done field seasons where these guys fly out, do bathymetric studies to study the contours of the bottom of the lake to, to gauge what the resource is worth, do LiDAR-based investigation to see how much it is above the water in case you were to do some type of impoundment. And, and these are, they'll be very detailed when they're done. So right now, we're at the point where we've collected the data. A portion of that data has been processed, and now they're starting to put that into a format that we would be able to release to the public so it would make sense and be consistent. So once I get that finally compiled, which they'll be doing over the next probably six, seven months, and verifying that work, then we'll be ready to do a rollout and provide a, a framework essentially for informed decision making down the road. So when we're looking at the future, and I'm getting close to wrapping up here, the, there's some planning and feasibility considerations. Certainly selection criteria, you know, you've got timing. We talked about that a little bit. When do the loads actually grow into the time when we need something? You don't want to have stranded assets out there. The size of the project and certainly the location due to transmission costs. Looking at loads, population, weather trends. If, if we continue to have more of a warmer weather cycle, that impacts how much energy we have to sell and demand. And then demand side management strategy is, is kind of interesting. If you, if you consider some of the things that, that we're faced with, they're kind of highlighted below that. You know, we've got some electric vehicles. We've got some conversions over to air source heat pumps. We got LED lighting. There's just a number of things that are in our daily lives. You just think back 10 years, how much that's changed. And I think you're going to continue to see that change. And in the overall energy world, things are changing very rapidly. Batteries especially are getting a lot of attention. The cost of wind is, is just been, has come down tremendously in the last five years. We also have some potential great asset areas for, for title. And that's something that, that may come into play too. The technology is, is still fairly immature, but hopefully we'll, we'll see that mature over the next five, 10 years. Any questions?
Any questions? Can you guys get the lights again?
Trey, you didn't tell us what we're paying for power.
6.8 cents, been at same cost for 19 years. And it's actually been lower than that because we typically provided a rebate, so it's on average, if you look, it's probably 6.3 cents. And I think it's good for folks to keep it in perspective. Our system, our retail rates are the lowest in the state. That's really notable. And I'll say, they're even lower than the average cost in the lower 48. So, I mean, we're very fortunate, especially when we're entering into economic hard times, that we have expensive, inexpensive power to the, to the retail individuals out there.
Another thing you didn't mention was the fact that we have liabilities and stuff associated with submarine cables. How many miles of that do we have?
We've got, so we've got about 14 miles of submarine cable times four, because we have four conductors at each crossing, and we have four crossings. And so SEPA holds reserves for a worst-case scenario that we, we have to replace cables. So we have four conductors per crossing, one's a spare. You know, as you guys know, GCI has had some underwater avalanches that have taken out some of their assets. Ours are more robust, but they, they actually go down in some trenches that are 1,200 feet deep. So as they make the curve down those trenches, they're sitting on a tight edge there, and we have some concerns about that. The problem is, it's so darn deep, you have a hard time getting down there to really see these cables. And we're going to be looking at possibly an ROV to get down there and look at some of these pinch points to see what it's like. And actually, you guys will see that in the budget this year. We're going to try to do another survey on the sub cables, but a little bit more detailed to assume, to, you know, assess our risk and see if we need to start thinking about that. The cables are huge. You got to mobilize a special boat. There's only a couple in the world, and you typically have to source your, your cable from, from Asia.
Did you have something?
Yeah, a couple. Trey, what's the status of the key line extension?
Certainly. So we, we achieved getting the record decision. And that was a huge milestone. Took many years to do, way longer than it ever should have. And so during that period of time, I'll say the economics of the project changed, and the cost of the projects, now to say in the neighborhood of $50, $60 million to make that interconnection. And we've always made it very clear in our agreement that, that SEPA and our customers wouldn't burden that cost, so it would have to be fully stated funding. So we, we have permission to build it, and, and that's kind of where it's at now. We still have some grant monies, about $2 million for engineering for that. And after the legislative session, we have an agreement to meet with the stakeholders and review the status and see where folks want to go.
Well, does the, the state never did fully fund it though, did they?
No, sir.
Okay, so they still got to fund it?
Yes.
Okay. Second question, looking to the future, which may not be any, may or may not happen, is, is Lake Grace still a potential to dump into Swan Lake if we can get it out of the federal hands or put it under a FERC requirement?
We looked at that when I, when I first got here. And it's got some big hurdles. And my impression is it's not the lowest paying fruit on the tree. And with those, especially if you weigh those large hurdles for minute, for permitting. So when we get the hydro side investigation done, then we'll have good information on, on the assets, and then we can sit down and do a, a comparison and say, you know, which one is, is doable, or which two. I mean, ideally, what I'd like to see is, is an asset that's up in an area where we have potentially two or three smaller units that we could develop potentially in, as you need it, right? You put your powerhouse down there and, and work toward, you know, if you only need two or three megawatts, why develop a 10 or 15 megawatt?
Yeah. Well, and with Grace, as you know, it's, you get to use the water twice.
Yep.
And we also know it's within a monument. And right now, we've got an administration which may work to go ahead and allow it to be used rather than being a 100-year fight.
Yeah, I'll just say our initial assessment said it wasn't, it wasn't the project to do.
Yeah.
Didn't pencil one out. So, but it's there, and we'll compare it with the other ones and, and bring that forward and eventually make a decision.
Any other questions? Trey. Trey, thanks for coming.
Thanks for your talking.
Where everybody knows, they'll understand what's going on.
Any talk?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Can we hit the light on that thing?
You don't like it?
Makes me too bright.
If it was only a tanning bed.
I did it.
Do you need to go to Bob's bar with Lisa?
I tell Fran, I tell everybody in town who does my hair. And that's not a good thing. Thanks, Dragon. All right, that brings us down to vouchers. Daily News, $4,933.63.
I move to approve the vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of $4,933.63.
Wait a second. I appreciate the money. I'm going to write a $15,000 check back to the government at the end of the week. Call the roll, please.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Gage?
Sure.
Zee?
Yes.
Seerickson?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
I pass this up and nothing brings us down to managers report. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just two, Mr. Mayor. As was noted in the paper today, peace health performance first procedures and the new surgeries reached yesterday. Reports I'm getting, they're very satisfied, and the medical staff is very pleased with the facilities. And I just want to remind the council that at the end of tonight, we do have a special meeting to review the KP of the Department of Labor.
Thank you. See if we have any questions on the manager's report. All right. City clerks file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorneys file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Zach Bowles from Saurico in Alaska Cab stopped by my office yesterday with some proposed changes to the for-hire vehicle ordinance with some language that we would like to see relating to transportation network companies. I faxed that information over to Katie today and would like to see it appear on the future agenda.
Carl, how soon can we get that on the next one, or is...
I will get the information from the clerk and forward it to the city attorney.
Okay. They'll get it on here in the future shortly.
To the attorney.
Excellent. Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? Mayor and council comments. Mark? Dave?
Who am I?
Bob?
This weekend's going to be a lot of K High sports. We have girls softball playing, and we have boys baseball playing at the same time. And we just finished up with girls soccer. So busy stuff for K High. It's a good time of year. Thank you.
I think there's a track.
Prom, too, isn't it?
Prom.
This weekend's busy.
Busy week.
Yeah.
Julie?
Just the Ketchikan Youth Initiative's event is this Saturday. There's still time to donate. However, it sold out. When the governor let us know three days ago that he is coming, we all of a sudden sold out.
Good work.
Thank you.
Eli, is there anything on that right now?
Channel A?
Not really anything. Had the, the dart team and Wish put on the In Her Shoes event, which teaches people, or actually shows people through a series of role-playing, what it's like to try to get out of a domestic violence or assault situation, and how to navigate the systems that be. I'd actually like to see, we're actually talking about doing it again now that we've actually done it. It'll be easier for us to re-build, like actually have another one and keep doing ourselves. So.
Excellent.
If that makes sense. It's been a long day.
Judy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Tick?
Nothing.
Okay. Since we have three executive sessions, I have nothing. Does anybody want to do radio tomorrow?
There should be an executive session, right?
Okay. I'll see if I can make it. The, we have three executive sessions. The first one is request discussion of litigation status of legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege regarding the recovery from Joseph Burns and rehabilitation research institute of the cost of this, the cost of the sea at Ketchikan has occurred as a result of demolition of 347 Bottom Street Gold Hospital. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move that city council to, to city manager's memorandum dated April 12, 217. It is the best interest of the city to go into executive session according with KMC 3.0, 4.025, A3, and AS 44.62.310 C3 to discuss litigation status with legal counsel with the attorney-client privilege regarding the recovery from Joseph Burns and rehabilitation research institute of the cost that the city Ketchikan has incurred as a result of demolition of 347 Bottom Street. result of demolition of 347 Bottom Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second, call the roll, please.
Flora?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
City?
Yes.
Gage?
Abstain.
Kous?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuyper?
No.
That passes. Five to one abstain and one no. Bill will jerk out of there and the other one. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're back in session, we met with management, and at this time, we have no proaction for the council, it brings us down to 1582. Request for executive session, discussion of potential litigation regarding the city's lease of Gateway Center for Human Services drop-in CSO and Horizon House 2. Akila, in advance of the real property and associated personal properties to Akila. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council to declare that consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated April 13, 2017, it is in the best interest of the city council to review and discuss potential litigation regarding the city's lease of the Gateway Center for Human Services drop-in slash CSP and Horizon House to Akila Incorporated, and the conveyance of that real property and associated personal property to Akila Inc., and matters auxiliary thereto, and to give direction to the city attorney in handling such matters in executive session in accordance with the Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A1 and A3, which includes the need to discuss subjects of knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the city, on the finances of the city, and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Second. Move in second, I call the roll, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Kous?
Yes.
Gage?
I'm going to abstain, and I'll just invoke disclosure, I work for Akila, and I will say though, I think that I'm confident that the boys will straighten things out.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuyper?
Sure.
Okay, that passes, that's a point of abstention, let's go in the other room.
Your jury's like normal, I don't like...
Okay, we're back in session, we met with management and our attorney, we're going to continue on a month-to-month basis and continue talking with Akila at this time, so that brings us down to our final executive session. And once I find what I did with my... All right, that's a press for executive session, discussion of strategic competitive aspects of the Ketchikan Public Utility Telecommunications Division Business Plan and Operations, so we have a motion.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council to declare consistent with the general manager's memorandum dated April 12, 2017, it is in the best interest of the city to discuss strategies, competitive aspects of the Ketchikan Public Utility Telecommunications Division Business Plan and Operation in executive session according with KMC Section 2.04.025A1, and in order to discuss subjects of immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city.
Move in second, call the roll, please.
Gage?
Yes.
You can go to this one.
Kous?
Off you go.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuyper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in session, we just finished an executive session, we have two motions, will somebody read one, please? I have no idea where they are. Has anybody have their iPad on? We can find it?
I do, too.
I got a resolution, is that what we're looking for?
This is rec. citation number one.
Your Honor? Yeah. Oh, great, go ahead, Mark.
Motion number one, I move the city council to approve resolution number 17-2662, amending the city of Ketchikan's compensation plan to provide for the classification of the position of business sales engineer, marketing and sales manager, and local content, social media and PR manager, and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Move in second, call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kous?
Okay.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuyper?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing, Mark?
Your Honor, I move the city council to direct the city manager to bear such budget transfers for formal city council considerations may be necessary to implement sales, marketing, and customer service division staffing modifications as recommended by staff in terms of strategic competitive aspects of the Ketchikan Public Utilities Telecommunications Division Business Plan and Operations.
Move in second, any comments? Call the roll.
Kuyper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kous?
Gage?
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
All right, that passes, that brings us down to donor adjournment. Carl, don't run off, I'd like to ask you a question, so. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you. Great meeting, guys.